And the commission start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we. We all got the minutes for the March first meeting. It looked fine to me. Did anyone have any changes, alterations, comments about the minutes? If so. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for March?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? I. Unanimous. Alright, first up is Eagle and Radnor Road zoning hearing board application. Before. Dave, is that you?
It is. Matt, how are you?
Very good, man. Before you get started, I'd like, I'd just like to say that in terms of public comment, I would strongly urge and appreciate if the public comment was limited to the steep slopes issue here, because that's what's in front of us tonight. This is not a development plan in front of us. And applicants are going to be back for final approval. So just, I, people are going to get a chance to say their piece on this, and I just would like the steep slopes issue to be what the public comments are directed at. It's all yours, David.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Matt. So the, the planning commission is familiar with this application. We've been in front of you a few times as part of what you've just described, our land development application and our proposed map change. We are not here to discuss those issues. Those issues have, as you know, been come through the planning commission and been recommended to the Board of Commissioners where they'll be heard at a later date. We're here tonight for a limited purpose of receiving a recommendation from the planning commission with respect to a zoning application that's pending later this month with respect to disturbance of steep slopes on the site. It's an issue I think that this planning commission has heard very recently and hears often in this township. The issue on this site that sits today is that the slopes that are there were, were manmade. And the Radnor Township ordinance does not make a concession for specifically manmade slopes. Where the ordinance does allow for an exclusion is where the steep slopes were created as a result of compliance with another section of the code, which is section 175 11. Ultimately, that's been interpreted by the township to say that if the slopes were created as a result of a grading permit issued, then you're exempt from having to comply with the provisions of the code. In this instance, these slopes were created well before the code itself was created. I think staff's aware of these slopes, the township is aware of them, and I think pretty much anybody that views them will concede these were indeed manmade slopes. The way that they're constructed, the locations in which they're constructed, that however, does not carry the day in and of itself. Instead, the applicant needs to, to show, I guess, one of two things in a situation like this. One, that the ordinance itself is drafted in such a way that there's an ambiguity with respect to slopes, or they've got to show that they're entitled to a variance. The provision of the ordinance that controls this section is section 280 112, and that's the slope controls provision of the zoning ordinance. And the, the very language of the code states that there are certain directives, certain desired outcomes when slopes are disturbed, and what the ultimate desire of this provision of the code is, and that's to limit erosion and sedimentation, to protect watersheds, prevent the increase in possibilities of landslides, maintain adequate foliage, and protect streams from increases in sediment. As we know from having heard this plan come through this planning commission, the current site is uncontrolled with respect to stormwater. So any development that came before this township with respect to this site, given the location of these slopes would need relief. There's kind of no way around that, and our engineer, Rob Lambert, can speak to that when we get into some more specific discussions around what the slopes are. But as part of this application, we'd, we'd be in front of you whether this were an R1 property, an R2, an R1A. Any redevelopment of this site, even under PI, would, would require disturbance of slopes. And beyond that, because the site is uncontrolled today with respect to stormwater, part of what this applicant is doing is taking measures and taking steps to make, to get the site controlled, to overdevelop stormwater. But beyond that, the applicant is also being sensitive to the natural features on the site, the, the trees, to allowing those conditions to remain. There's a large parking lot in the middle of the site when you come in as part of the access point, and the edges of that parking lot were sloped and created a manmade slope in that area. And as a result, in order to get rid of that parking lot, which is just a sea of asphalt, we have to disturb those slopes. It puts us in a situation where had this application been submitted, or had this site been developed with the homes that are on it and the parking lot that is on it in the year 2000, it would have come through the township, all of those slopes would have been permitted, and this developer would be exempt from having to comply with this provision. So it's a unique situation insofar as the conditions were created, not by this applicant, but they also preclude by right development because we can't, we can't navigate the site without touching slopes, given their locations. And the slopes themselves are, like I said, next to the parking lot. They were put there to build the parking lot, parking lot up and create a level surface there as well as being next to the homes that were created on the site. As they currently exist, the slopes that are there contribute to runoff on the site. They contribute to the uncontrolled situation and the stormwater detriment that this site puts forth. We believe that development as we're proposing is ultimately a betterment for the site. It will control the stormwater. It will meet the very intent of the ordinance, which is to limit some of those things that are happening today. And it will be ultimately in compliance with the code provisions that the, that the ordinance wants you to be in when you develop slopes, which is that section 175. So I'm, God bless you. I'm going to turn this over to Rob Lambert to specifically discuss the slopes, but I wanted to frame some of the issues that are dealing just with the slopes tonight.
Thanks, David.
Well, I'm going to share my screen. I believe I have privileges. There we go. Can everyone see the screen?
Yep.
Okay, so this is a, a aerial from 1958 showing, showing the site, and I'm just going to start here. So Eagle Road would go left to right just past this area. You can see the main Valley Forge. You can see St. David's Golf Club. And the site is this big open area right in the, kind of the center of this image. And so that was before the parking lot, and if you note, all the houses are not shown in this picture. So after 1958, you can see an image here, 1965, where this parking lot was constructed. And then through subsequent years, I'm going to go through here, you can see by 1971, you can start to see the little houses if you look closely, all start to show up on the site. So as Dave was explaining is, the, the site has been developed over years. We've also looked at various USGS images, and we'll start at the top, you know, going back to 1894, and then Eagle Road would be left to right at the angle. This is Radnor Street Road going kind of upper left to lower right, and all these are going to be in the same orientation. Again, going through 1952, you can see that there were two structures closest to Eagle Road, and we'll see those on a subsequent image. And then going through 1966, you can start to see some of the houses appear. You still have the two structures shown on the aerial or on the, on the map. And then by 1992, you see all of the houses that have been shown before to you. So I'm going to go look to this, a plan. So this plan was 1992 aerial. So you can see there was an existing large structure. Eagle Road would have been left to right. You can see the parade grounds at Valley Forge. So there was a large structure and actually a secondary large structure at the top of the hill. And then by 2002, those two buildings were actually removed. And you can see, so over the last, you know, 50, 75 years, this site has been in constant flux over time. What I like to do here. So this plan is the plan I think that you've seen before. Eagle Road is on the left-hand side. Radnor Street Road is across the bottom. Walden is on the right. And what we've done is we've highlighted the slopes, so kind of this reddish pink color. Those are slopes that we, that are manmade slopes that we propose to remove. And I'm going to go through each area as we go around. The kind of the teal were manmade slopes that we're really not touching, so we're just going to leave those as is. The purple, it wasn't as clear if those were manmade or not, so we've, we've left them and we're not touching any of those slopes. So I'll start with the large parking lot. So you can see the large parking lot that's accessed off of Radnor Street Road. The whole site is sloping, so naturally when they built this, on the uphill side, they cut into the slope. And so that created this whole band of slopes coming down and around. And on the downhill side, again, they filled. So you created a cut condition on the uphill side, a fill condition on the downhill side. And then as you go around and start looking at all the houses, just simply naturally, when they built the house, they created a flatter area. And it was a slope. It was a 10% slope. It wasn't a steep slope, but it was a 10% slope. But in order to create the flat pad for the house, they cut on the uphill side of the slope. You can see that in this teal color. And they filled on the downhill side, and I'll show you some specific pictures about each one of these. But again, the house, it filled on the low side, cut on the upside, where they had this large structure at the top of the hill. They filled kind of all around it to create this, this plateau up top. And you can see the bands of slopes again out toward Radnor Street Road where they're filling around each house. And so it was just nestling the houses into the grade which created that. I'm going to go here.
Hey, Rob, are those houses split levels?
Many of them are split level, I believe, yes.
So that would like, that, the grading is different for split level anyway, right?
Right, and you're going to see that in some of these pictures. I'm, I'll skip to the houses here. I'll go back so you can see, but you can see, you know, like this house was built, they flattened out where the house is, and then the downhill side becomes a slope. Right? It was just the natural area adjacent to the house. Here is a split level. And you can see just the way it was built, you know, you have the upper part, you have a slope going in where they had the access. But it was all, all really disturbed. It wasn't naturally like this. And then in the back of that same house, it's a little bit hard to see with the, with the vegetation here, but all around this back corner, you can kind of see where they have some timber walls, is they created a flat yard, and to create the flat yard, they started digging into the, the hill above. And but I'll go back to the top there. I skipped down so you could see the picture you asked about. And so, starting at the, at the upper area, so this is all the way up by, there's a asphalt turnaround area at the top of the hill where there was a former building. So that was in that 1992 picture you saw a building. So that was all up in this area, but what you can see is this is all asphalt. It's kind of debris piles now. But on this right-hand side of it is an area where it was just artificially created when they created this asphalt area. Again, it was kind of hard to see here with the vegetation, but there are slopes on the left-hand side here where they created those slopes. And here's a perfect example. They cut in the road or the driveway going up to where those two buildings that were demolished were located. But adjacent to that, there's a flat area and they cut it down. And if you start looking, and I'll go back to the overall map, if you start looking at where they've really created the manmade slopes, one of the intents of the code is, is that you don't disturb the wooded areas. And as all of you know from our previous presentations, this whole plan has been designed to preserve those wooded areas up top. You have some, a tree here and there, but you really, the slopes aren't in the wooded areas. They're around structures and parking. And here's the parking lot is, this is just a very consistent grade going all the way down where they cut in this parking lot. So you have steps down to the parking lot. It cut into the grade. And then the following picture rotates around 90 degrees. So Radnor Street Road's off to the left. But again, you can see they just cut in this whole corner to provide a level parking area. And then we get into all of the, the house pictures that we talked about. So going back to this image, so we went around, these were the two buildings that we talked about. That was the asphalt turnaround where you saw the pictures and kind of the slopes just adjacent to that. These were the steps with the driveway that went up past those houses. And then down below is the parking lot where you really get this manmade set of slopes that, that went through and kind of bisects the entire property. But I'd be happy to go through more detail with you, or if you have questions or additional questions of what you see.
So Rob, what, if, if you can't get relief from this deep slope issue, what happens to this project?
This, this project may come in a different form. And it may come entirely into a different type of project.
Good. And, and the steep slopes that you're going to need to address are about what percentage of the property?
I don't have that exact percentage, but I can, I'll make sure I get that before the zoning meeting. By calling it, I think it's under, well under 5%.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that would be what it looks like to me. I don't know how other people feel, but it seems like a, a small part of the project footprint.
Right. And as you can see, the whole, so up along Eagle Road and coming a little bit down Radnor Street Road are the area that we were really trying to preserve that tall tree canopy. And so if you had to preserve kind of the unnatural part of the center, it's going to push the development into those areas that we're trying to preserve.
Matt, it's Dave. So one of the things I think that kind of seeing this application at this point in the process, one of the benefits, I think, for the township and for the residents is you see, you've already seen what the project looks like as we propose it coming through the land development phase. So you see what the ultimate outcome is. You, you see what this application is ultimately trying to achieve. But I think just to make sure kind of we're super clear, the project as we brought it through dies if there's no relief for steep slopes. Our entrance comes in and basically hits almost an immediate steep slope, and then any access kind of right or left from that point. So the work we've done to line up the roads and create the access point basically goes away because you couldn't access the site at that point. And then go, go to either side of the property. I guess it's north and south. You would, going south on the property would immediately cross slopes. So and if you remember that the plan as we're proposing it, that entrance drive comes into a cul-de-sac and access is taken to the right off, off of that entrance drive. So the project as we see it certainly dies. And I think any reasonable use of the property is extremely compromised if we have to avoid slopes in their entirety just because of their sporadic location and ultimately the, the goals of the ordinance, which are to kind of control that ENS, and then as well be mindful of the surrounding vegetation. So I just want to make sure that, that we're clear. We definitely did go through and look to see if, if there was a way to do this and not disturb these slopes and keep this project moving. And ultimately, we found that that was not possible. And as a result, we submitted our application.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I, having been on the site, I mean, it's, it was, I'm no engineer, but it seemed obvious to me that, especially around the parking lot, these were manmade slopes. I, I have a couple of staff questions, but before that.
I have a quick question. And this relief on the, on these slopes is required regardless of what, where this ends up in terms of R1, R1A, R2, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
I was, I was, I do have some, uh, I do want to ask Roger and Steve some, a couple of questions, but before that, is there any other, any commissioner comment at this point? Roger, how do you feel about like this, the, this issue? Like, where, where's your head on this? You know, it, it looks to me like manmade, uh, steep slopes here.
I, I, I agree that they, you know, I've, I've looked at the site and reviewed the plans of Mr. Lambert, and I agree that they were created under manmade slopes. And I believe, I believe Mr. Falcone made the point that had, had this been constructed in 2000, it would be permitted and there wouldn't be any issues with, with these slopes at this point.
Okay. Steve, what's your take on this?
Mr. Gold, I can cure with the applicant's engineer. After I visited the site, I've seen it for many years. Aside from that, the slopes are very, very consistent. The distance between the contour lines is very consistent. The grading at the split levels, that's very typical of what you would do. There's a, you know, it's a flat spot in front of the door. It drops down to a garage and a rear door. I concur that these would be manmade slopes.
So it, it appears to me that we should recommend that the zoning hearing board approve this waiver, this, this hardship. Does anyone want to make a motion thusly?
Well, I'm, Matt, I'll, I'll make a motion that we fully support the disturbance of these manmade steep slopes on this property.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Wait, before you vote, before you vote.
I'm sorry, public comment. That's right. Sorry. Thanks, Mary. Trish, we have public comment?
Ian, do we have any public comment?
Yes, I see one hand raised for Barbara Blackney.
Yes. Hi, thank you. Can you?
Hi, Barbara.
Yep. Um, thank you. And I, I just have a couple of comments and then perhaps some history on where the planning commission has stood in the past on the issue of steep slopes. I do want to just express some dismay that the planning commission would be ready to move forward.
In two years, neither Prime Minister, Netanyahu, or his various opponents have been able to build. What is that?
Sorry, that's not me. But I'm hearing that on there. Um, you know, without hearing public comment first and the benefit of knowledge that neighbors that have lived right, you know, within this parcel of land for 20 plus years might be able to, to shed. I do, you know, agree that it appears that the slope right around the parking lot certainly appears to be manmade. But if you walk by or spend any time kind of from afar viewing that entire site, the whole site is basically a slope. You know, so some of the other hill and, you know, if you approach our neighborhood of North Wayne coming from Lancaster Avenue via Shimonie Road, you're definitely, you know, headed down a hill towards a valley, which is more or less that creek that runs right adjacent to the site and then back uphill. So I would urge you to, to consider that really, that whole topography there. If you view the neighboring property, the Marino property, it's quite hilly. The whole site is really slopes. And I'm not sure that it's evident. You minute that the hills that you see adjacent to the houses, you know, are manmade. I think there's quite spurious evidence to that. And certainly would be a reason to build split level houses, in my opinion, or walkout basements. But my husband served on the planning commission from 2004 to 2007, so I have great appreciation for the time you all put in, in the volunteer duty. And the responsibility of that. I became a bit of a, you know, planning commission fan during that time, plus I cared deeply about land conservation, historic preservation related issues. So I watched many, many meetings during that time and over the years since then. I do remember that there was discussion many, many times about steep slopes. So I did a little digging through, searching actually, on the township website. And have limited time, just like all of you, but I do realize one of the, you know, the upsides of public service is term limits. You do your, your duty, and then we move on to new people and fresh point of views. But one of the downsides of that is lack of continuity of knowledge sometimes. So I wanted to read to you this excerpt from the minutes of a meeting of December 5th, 2005. And very likely there's reference to this since then. I just haven't had the time to, to look for all of that, but this is brief, I promise you. But it's a discussion regarding the amendment of subdivision and zoning codes definition of steep slope and amendment to the definition of lot area in the subdivision code. And I'll skip the bit about lot area because it's not immediately relevant tonight. But here's the excerpt I would like to read. With respect to the steep slope issue, wording needs to be changed to clarify the issue that the township doesn't care how the slope got there in the first place, i.e. natural or manmade. Even though several members of the planning commission are not comfortable with that language, that is the ultimate goal of the ordinance to state that there is no difference. John Simon suggested that this change apply to subdivision applications only, thereby not affecting the single homeowner who wishes to put an addition on his home or construct an accessory building on his property. Again, Mr. Simon reiterated the fact that they are seeking verbiage that makes no difference between a natural slope or one which was manmade many years ago. Although not specifically amended in either the subdivision or zoning code, it was determined that a steep slope is a steep slope, and it shouldn't matter how it got there. And I do know from following meetings, both of the planning commission and, and the Board of Commissioners, that that has been adhered to for many, many years. So again, I thank you for your time, and that is my comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Ian, this, Trish, is there any other public comment?
I am not seeing any more hand raised, hands raised from the public.
So we were about to vote on supporting the position of the developer as they go to zoning hearing board. All who approve, raise your hand. Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Trish, I think we're unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, next up is 200 South Itherton Avenue. It's a preliminary land development plan. Nick, are you on this?
I am.
How are you?
Good, good, Matt. Thank you. You've seen this before. You saw both in preliminary plan. You saw as prior to the Board of Commissioners getting it for a recommendation for the conditional use. The only thing that's changed since the last time you saw this is that the conditional use application of the applicant was approved by the Board of Commissioners. There was a significant condition in that use approval, and that was a construction of a five-foot sidewalk. And that was a construction of a five foot sidewalk along South Itham on the eastern side of. South Itham connecting Agnes Irwin all the way down to Metalwood Road. That was a condition of the approval. Basically, the approval condition reads that. The applicant will construct those sidewalks if the township's able to get the easements. That are required outside of the public right of way, and if they're unable to get those easements, then the applicant would contribute. I apologize. That's my old lab barking it probably a squirrel. So part of the approval was that. That if that if there if the township's unable to get those right of way approvals. That the applicant would actually contribute the cost of those sidewalks to the township sidewalk fund. That kind of leads to one of the waivers that we're requesting here this evening, and that is regarding the sidewalks interior to development itself. I believe all the discussions we've had with both planning and the board of commissioners, whether it's always assumed that would be in lieu of sidewalks. Within the cul-de-sac development itself, since the applicant would be spending a significant amount of money installing those sidewalks along South Itham. That most people and both boards seem to agree was a good idea. Just to review this subdivision, this nine lot subdivision was part of a approved density modification plan for the development of 30 acres. This is for 6.9 acres of that 38 acres. There was a previous main mansion there that was that burned down several years ago. Since that time, the property has been distressed. It was purchased by GPX in February of this year. They went to the homeowners association, homeowners association unanimously approved that they like this development, in particular the fact that. Of the cul-de-sac development on it. As I said, since you've seen the plan, nothing has changed outside of the installation of sidewalks on South Itham. You have those plans for the installation of the sidewalks along South Itham before you as well. It's already been engineered and laid out. And submitted to the township. If you wish, I we basically have resolved all the issues in the review letters except for a couple. The last review letters we had were in October. You recently in March received. Comments from our engineer shock group regarding those comments, and I believe really remaining, there's only a couple outstanding issues remaining. We're asking for two waivers. One is a traditional waiver that pretty much everyone asked for regarding. Items within 500 feet of development. We have provided an aerial that basically serves the same. Use of that and the same need of that indicating all the monuments within 500 feet. And the other waiver where we are requesting is sidewalks within the cul-de-sac itself, within the development itself. As I mentioned, we are installing the sidewalks along South Itham. There are a couple of comments in the review letters that I can kind of hit on. I believe there's only maybe three of them. That have not really been resolved here. All of the zoning issues raised by Roger in the Gannett Fleming review letter, that should have been resolved by the density modification. Conditional use approval by the board of commissioners.
Nick, as as you're going through those items, can the planning commission have the benefit of of hearing from Roger? To see if he agrees that all the zoning issues have been resolved either by the approval of the conditional use application or by other means?
Sure.
Yeah, just at first, I just want to say we just received these plans a little over a week ago and haven't had time to really dig through all of them. But has as Nick had said that their engineer had gone through and and provided responses to each comment, and that letter is in your packet tonight. And I agree that the zoning issues have now been taken care of through the the conditional use approval.
Basically, the other issues. You know, are compliance issues, you know, and obviously Roger and the engineer will have have to review them to make certain they are in compliance, but. You know, our response to all them is basically a will comply, and as I said, the plans have been updated to indicate compliance with those issues. The the remaining issues that that I see were the two waiver requests that I mentioned. And then I believe that really is the two issues from Damon's letter. From Gilmore. And again, I believe we're in compliance with with the code on that. We we. Have revised a subdivision to comply with a number of the items. You may recall there was an issue regarding the cul-de-sac radius that's been revised and complied with. There was an issue.
I'm sorry, Nick, and I'm interrupting you again, and I do apologize.
Go ahead, yeah.
We don't have review letters for the new plans. They were just submitted a week ago.
I don't believe so, outside of.
Yeah, that's correct.
We have a letter from shock. Which basically says that we will comply and have complied with all of those items.
But 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 our our engineers haven't had time to review the plans and issue review letters.
Correct.
Very much. And if they haven't had a chance to handle this in the appropriate way. It struck me, Nick, hi, it skipped. Few things that are in the reply letter that says they're placeholders as opposed to final proposals. Do you think it's really appropriate to, I guess you do, but to go for preliminary approval tonight with those openings in the?
Yeah, yeah, Skip, I think one of the items was like lighting, and that's where they mentioned the placeholders. Request, and that's really a final plan item. I mean, the preliminary plan shows where lighting would be. And indicating, but of course, a lighting plan would all be subject to final plan approval, or just here this evening on preliminary plan.
But Nick, there was there's also there there are stormwater placeholders as well, like there there are nine place, at least nine or 10 placeholders. Which I don't know how, if I'm Roger, like I I I'm I'm going to be worried about that because. You know. We don't know what what we're dealing with here, like it it seems like. There's a ten, it seems like there's a tendency in my four years on planning. That, you know, there's this, there's a lot of will comply, and I understand that. But I think for preliminary approval, I'd like to see the details. I really would. I.
Matt, this is this is Roger. Some of the details that Nick is referring to with the final stormwater design and the lighting design is a requirement of final plan approval, not preliminary plan approval. Upon preliminary, you just need to show that you can comply with these ordinances. The final nuts and bolts details are part of the final plan. So that the stormwater design typically is all finalized at the final plan stage, and they'll be back in front of you. At sometime in the future for final plan approval.
So Roger, in general, you're you're, are you comfortable with? Are you comfortable with us moving ahead? On approval with this much detail out of this? Plan, or am I just?
Yeah, I I I don't have any objections over this, as as Nick mentioned, some of the stuff is is relatively minor details. And again, with the with the stormwater, that's final plan approval. And then after final plan approval, during the grading permit stage at construction, there's another bite at the apple there for stormwater. Where then they have to comply once again at the grading permit process. So the stormwater, we have a lot of time to get that finalized. And should they not be able to meet one of those ordinances when we get into the details, then then they're back in front of you because they have to comply with the ordinance. So.
I I just like to chime in here, and I fully understand what Roger's saying. And that's fine, but I do agree with Matt in that. It's been talked about for some time. By the planning commission that they'd like to see plans somewhat more complete and some of the stormwater requirements, and I'm not. Going against what Roger said, I fully understand, and there's no problem with what he's saying. But like item five. Please revise the stormwater report to include all applicable case, all applicable calculations for a couple of the areas. Please provide infiltration testing results, including a depth limiting zone. And they say that'll be part of the final plans. If for some reason there's infiltration, if the site fails. Our infiltration requirements, they're going to have to go to the board and request a waiver for that portion or whatever portion of the stormwater management. Needs to be done, and that's a that's a sizable issue, right? And I think that's something that should be. Drawn out on the preliminary plan. Any revisions to size of location or individual structures will be addressed at this time. Profiles over utilities, and Roger's correct, the some of these are just details. But nonetheless, I, you know, I think. The planning commission should have as clean a possible plan. At a preliminary approval in that. You want that you just be outside agency and, you know, other items like that between preliminary and final. Lastly, I think the planning commission should know. That they or should espouse on the fact that they're requesting a waiver. For interior sidewalks, and what they're noting in there is, hey, we're requesting a waiver. But by the way, we're we're going to install, or we've been told we have to install these sidewalks on the other side of the street. Really, these two are, these are two very different items, right? The conditional use hearing. The board required them to install sidewalks on the eastern side of South Itham Avenue. There was no quid pro quo for sidewalks on the eastern side of South Itham Avenue. And what's required in the development and along Itham Avenue was part of that development. That's why they're they're requesting a waiver. So I would like also the planning commission to pose to the planning commission, what are your thoughts on that waiver request? That's. To me, that's a sizable waiver request. They're they're playing it against what they're required to do. But they are asking to sit to not install any sidewalks in the development.
First, just.
Why are they asking not to install sidewalks? What's the specific reason? Is it aesthetic? Or is it merely a cost or what?
Well, Skip, to be perfectly honest, from the very beginning, we talked about this and the township approached us about sidewalks on South Itham. It was always discussed as in lieu of. Now, I agree that the board of commissioners put a condition on that evening that I found out. When I saw the resolution about five minutes before the conditional use hearing. And. You know, even when we, I believe when we met with the planning commission previously, we also talked about we'd be willing to install sidewalks. On South Itham, but always talked about being in lieu of sidewalks in the cul-de-sac. Our belief here is on these type of homes, these estate estate manner type homes. The residents really don't want sidewalks. I mean, we have a cul-de-sac, very limited traffic. The residents would rather have more lawn area, more front yard than sidewalks that they would have to maintain. You know, particularly since it's a cul-de-sac with nine homes on it with very limited traffic on it. As to the stormwater issue that the code provides that stormwater is a final plan. Issue, you know, it's not a preliminary plan issue.
Maybe if I can jump in there, we did submit, we did submit a narrative explaining the stormwater. Design and the feasibility as part of the preliminary. And as Roger said, you know, the details, calculations. And and things like that to go into this are final plan requirements. They're not preliminary plan requirements.
So all that being said, and you know, I want to let everybody know. We've had town hall, we had a town hall meeting on the proposed sidewalk on the east side of South Itham. Developer has spent time talking to the residents. This project has been before everybody. So I I don't want to take anything away from the develop, the developers and his team's due diligence. In bringing this project forward and bringing it to light. There's there's nothing about that. But I I'll throw this to the planning commission and I give you my opinion. So we got a revised set of plans and the. Applicants engineer responded to each comment, and I don't doubt, and Roger had noted that the zoning, that's fine. It was all taken care of. But. From my standpoint, I would like to have our consultants and staff. Do the final review, and it may be minimal on what was submitted late. But I I'd rather come back to the planning commission with our consultants and staff saying. Yes, here we are, right? But we got plans late. They're not fully reviewed. You don't have review letters.
I I second what Steve said, if you're looking for input from staff, I under I understand Roger's position. But regardless of whether either the ordinance or tradition provides. In Radnor, state law says you're entitled to final plan approval in accordance with your preliminary plan approval, and if. I think it's very awkward to. Give preliminary approval to a plan when you're not sure if infiltration stormwater BNP's are going to actually infiltrate. Because it could require a change in the stormwater management system that affects lot layout. So. My recommendation would be wait till your engineers have a chance to issue review letters, so you have the benefit. Of professional expertise in the review of the plans.
I, Mary, I feel that I I. I I like I like to, I like this development. I I think the neighbors want it. But I just feel awkward right now, like I I don't feel like I'm ready to approve something where. It just seems like it's not complete. I mean, this application is not complete, and I'd like to know how some other commissioners feel about it.
Well, I think I've already spoken that I learned that there's so many placeholders, and I didn't realize the depth of the stormwater issue. So I'm sort of in agreement with you, Matt.
Yeah, I I feel similarly after hearing, you know, the staff and the fact they want more time.
Any other commissioner comment here?
Matt, I do as well, especially after hearing Mary's comment.
I I agree with all the other board members. My question I have is that what's the downside? The developer to go back, look at the plans, readjust, redo their calculations, and come back to the board? Can they come back next month? What's the downside?
They could definitely come back next month. That would be up to them how quickly. If we have new comments, I mean, Roger will be able to have review letters out before the next PC meeting. Mr. Canelia may have to provide an additional extension while this occurs. I'd have to look back at the sheet, but Nick may have to give us an extension. And then if all is well, at the next planning commission meeting, they would be before the board. I would have them on the schedule. On the agenda, it'd be before the board of commissioners directly thereafter.
So can 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 we also review right now? In my mind, there's two different things going on. You have. The planning, the the plants, calculations and stormwater, then also you have the sidewalk issue.
I'm hoping that the planning commission will opine on that. I mean, that's that's a waiver request. It's going to go to the board, and it's the board of commissioners decision. But and Mr. Canelia laid out the reasons why the developer doesn't feel they they would be required. But again, understand, aside from what Mr. Canelia had said that all along. You know, we said we do one without the other. A waiver is still required. If they don't want to put the sidewalks in the development, right? There, like I said, there was no quid pro quo. If they don't wanna put the sidewalks in the development, right? There, like I said, there was no quid pro quo. Um so they're gonna have to go to the board. I'm asking the planning commission to give some opinion on that so I can include that. Uh when this gets wrapped up and goes to the board.
Can I can I just ask a quick question? What is the width of the cul-de-sac right now?
The cartway width is twenty eight feet.
What's the stand? Forgive me for asking this question. I should know this answer. But in a standard residential street in Radnor, what's the standard width?
Twenty eight feet.
I think when we last dealt with the sidewalk issue, we were, as a commission, we were pretty um. Firm about how important sidewalks were on Ithian because people walk their. Dogs, they had kids and strollers on that road. People are going forty miles an hour. It's not good. It's not a good situation. Uh. If if that's a trade off, I I mean personally, I feel like. The interior sidewalks are less important for safety reasons than the Ithian sidewalk.
Uh Matt, just one thing to remember, it's not a trade off. It's still the and. Whatever the planning commission's recommendation, the planning commission may say we support the waiver to uh on sidewalks. It's gonna go to the board. But the way the conditional use was written, it doesn't give them a break on the interior sidewalks. It just says you have to install these. They have to go for a waiver if they don't wanna put them in.
I I I just, I personally think that aesthetically and as well as if you're gonna have a non another layer. Of non-permeable area, particularly on a downward sloping street. I I just don't see the the personally, I just don't see the need for having any interior sidewalks on a cul-de-sac.
You know, having lived on a street for thirty eight years and recently moved, but um. We had no sidewalks on Atlee Road and uh the carway was even narrower and. I I guess I was grateful that we didn't have sidewalks in a weird way. I think it uh had a more country feel.
And Skip, we walk that, as you know, Atlee all the time and it's a great country feel. The way it is without the sidewalks, they could really destroy the feel on Atlee if you had sidewalks and I think similarly, you know, this will be the same way.
Does the surrounding streets that this is sort of being nestled into, are there sidewalks there?
Uh so the the Old Oaks neighborhood, um now, you know Meadowwood, no, there's not sidewalks on. The best of my knowledge, Browning Lane, Meadowwood or or those areas.
Or Trenon.
Or Trenon, that is correct, sir. So my goal was to get some type of response from the planning commission on the sidewalks, whether you support the waiver or you don't. And and impervious surface isn't something to worry about because they would have to cover that in their store order management. So. That that you don't have to worry about, but whether you, the aesthetics of the sidewalk or for whatever reason. I would just like to hear the planning commissions launch on this. So the board has some information from you.
Mister Chairman, i- if it it bears noting that um Liz Springer is trying to get into the meeting right now. So you might wanna make her part of the conversation.
Is she on, Mary? I.
No, we're uh Ian's gonna have to send her the link. We, I can't give her my link because then she's gonna come up as Steve Nourcini. So.
Well, well.
Excuse me, is Sarah?
Really, cause I sent her my link, sorry.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh Mary, um is is there a technical reason you can't build the sidewalks?
Uh not that I'm not aware of Dave Fiorello.
No, no.
So you just don't, you just don't want to?
Well, just to let the board know, the sidewalks along Ithian. Are probably three times the expense of the sidewalks in the cul-de-sac. Now, I know people don't wanna hear about expense, but. You know, again, the way we discuss this, I mean, we said the township wants the sidewalks on South Aitken. Um, we'd be willing to do it, but we we always discussed it.
Whatever the planning commission thinks is in the best interests of the neighborhood vis a vis sidewalks, interior, interior. That's what's gonna um rule the day. But I I'll just take a little bit of an issue with Nick's recollection of of the history of this. There was a lot of discussion the first time this plan came in front of you. Um by people who felt it was really important to have sidewalks on the Trenon side of like avenue.
Things is in the best interest.
Okay, yeah, she she's logged on as me. Thanks, Liz. And um um. And the discussion and and John Rice and I spoke of this often was. Whether to require sidewalks along the Ithian Avenue frontage. When the homeowners association wanted nothing to do with them and had to handle the issue of sidewalks on Ithian. Given that the homeowners association wouldn't accept responsibility for them. And I think that this was the alternative to that. That doesn't mean you can't grant a waiver for the interior sidewalks. But I I don't recall it being uh um of an in lieu of situation.
And and I have to concur with the solicitor. It is not an in lieu of situation. I know that's what Nick's inferring. If it wasn't in lieu of situation, that would have been part of the conditional use hearing. But the commissioners, whether they approve the waiver or not, is immaterial. But as part of land development, they're required to put sidewalks. If they don't wanna install the sidewalks for the reason Mr. Canelia. And Mr. Conwell noted, they need to request a waiver.
Yeah, and we are requesting the waiver. I mean, we understand.
And 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 I I just wanted to get some feel for the planning commission so we can provide that to the board of commissioners. Uh when this plan goes to the board.
Just to make this clear, it there's no technical reason not to have the sidewalks. So why don't you wanna have the sidewalks? Just because you don't want to build them.
Um hey, Nick, maybe I I could answer this. Um uh S- Stephen, this is Joe Conwell. I'm I'm with the developer. Um first, we don't think that the buyers want sidewalks in. In this, in this type of a home. And so for that reason, that's, you know, selfishly, that's where our our interest is in. Is is trying to create a product that 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 the buyers want the most. Secondly, um although I know. That um cost is 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 kind of our problem. Um it it is the uh putting the sidewalks on Ithian Avenue. Is just south of three times the cost of putting sidewalks in. And so. If it although it's not popular, cost is is a is, I think, a reasonable consideration. And secondly, with due res- all due respect to every uh to the the varying um opinions on. On w- whether or not, you know, what the prior discussions were. I have been involved in all of them. And some of them have been in public meetings and some of them have not. Um and they all have i- included the concept of rather than. You know, the the Ithian Avenue uh sidewalks would be a safety issue and is a big priority for the residents of the community. And so we would, you know, we we may wanna consider having having you as part of your project. Put sidewalks on Ithian Avenue. Um and i- and I don't know exactly what, I don't wanna quote anybody. But the concept was pretty consistently, maybe not in every single conversation, but pretty consistently was. You know, in lieu of putting them in the uh rather than putting them in the cul-de-sac. And so that that's really the reason. There's no, there's not a technical reason. But that is what we always understood the discussion to be. We actually made a written proposal to the township. Um that you you know, clearly uh stating that we were, we would, you know, be happy to. Make it a certain, you know, uh it was actually at that time, it was a a a certain amount of money that we we offered. Uh because that's what we thought it was gonna take to um to build them. So I I just wanna be clear and and absolute, I absolutely acknowledge that there is no quid pro quo in the board of commissioners. Conditional use approval. Um and don't dispute that at all, but I I do feel that we are within reason requesting this 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 waiver. And I and I, you know, wanted to address your question, which is a reasonable one, Stephen, that you had to ask twice. Is there a technical reason?
Um I'd like to just ask a quick question here and I apologize for joining in later, but my work meeting went over. Um. I live, I back up to site out, South Aitken Avenue to this neighborhood that you're building. So I apologize if I've missed a prior conversation before joining in, but. We've been asking for sidewalks on Ithian for years.
Right.
So who who are you speaking to in our neighborhood that's telling you that we don't want them?
No, we're not, we never saw this.
We're not, we we we.
No, we never saw.
What I have on the screen, a plan to put uh all the sidewalks on on Ith- on Ithian.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. I mean, what you do and from my personal opinion. You know, if you're in a cul-de-sac community and you're trying to preserve a certain community feel and and you as a neighborhood. Want to do something a little different within that community, that could be one thing, but I I strongly feel that. I mean, literally, you can't look anywhere but on the road when driving on site out than right now. I do it multiple times a day. And it is not if someone's gonna get hit, it's when they get hit. It's going to happen.
Yeah, what we've just, we we have been, we we have fully designed sidewalks for the east side of Ithian Avenue.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's not what the waivers for. I apologize. I missed your earlier conversation, but I have problems logging in with the YouTube thing. So.
Now, the waivers only for the interior of the cul-de-sac.
Gotcha. Okay.
Are there any questions about the the Ithian Avenue sidewalks that we designed?
Yeah, Joe, uh it says four feet on the plan and then I I swear I I read five feet.
Well, i- it it was and you know, Dave Fiorello, can you explain why we're showing four foot sidewalks instead of five?
Yes, uh we're providing a a minimum of a green space between the edge of the road and the sidewalk and right now. Uh we've got limited right of way uh to fit a five foot sidewalk in. We can get a four foot sidewalk and stay within. Uh the township right away, but there are certain portions along there that if we went to five feet, we'd be encroaching onto private property. And would need uh a easement or whatever from the property owners. Uh so we're proposing a four foot sidewalk along there to stay within um available right away.
Mister Golis, I uh so in reviewing, again, these plans were reviewed. Uh we did have Commissioner Barowski and Township Manager Bill White did host a town hall meeting. With uh the residents along that side of the road. So in speaking with a developer, I think it would be fair to ask, even though the conditional use required five foot. For the reasons Mr. Fiorello mentioned, uh if this moves forward. To request the board that they they go with the four foot for all the reasons Mr. Fiorello stated. Going five foot and bringing them back further would require easements all along the sidewalk or at least in many places. So this might be a happy medium, should these be built.
I'll just note very quickly, if you do do four foot sidewalks, you will need a five foot by five foot section every two hundred feet. To meet the ADA requirements. I don't know how that will impact any easements that you may um that may be required.
Thank you, Damon. And I did let the developer know. I think that's something that's upcoming and uh. Mister Drummond does have a copy of this, but this is is concept level. So as the developer uh provides more detailed plans for this. Mister Drummond and Gilmore Associates will be reviewing it as will staff. And then we'll meet with the residents again uh to give them a better idea of what what is being proposed.
Go ahead. Pardon me. Um so I'm I'm a little puzzled. I'm looking at the packet of drawings and the cul-de-sac shows sidewalks.
Uh do you have the latest packet, Stephen? I know we submitted.
This this, well, uh I'm looking at Connect Flame's uh download. So perhaps if you have another plan, please, please show it to me.
I think Joe has it up on the screen.
Yeah, he here is the the development plan.
So even if you put sidewalks in here, other than walking within your own nine house community, that they really don't go anywhere, do they?
Um, no. Uh my question is, is that what's the practicality of the sidewalk in the first place on a cul-de-sac with just nine homes? I mean, I I I just don't see the, I just see, don't see the point period of of having uh sidewalks there. And I agree with uh, you know, just listening to Nick and and listening to uh to Mister Conwell. About it's not quid pro quo and I, you know, that that aside, I just don't see the need for that. And listen, from a, you know, quid pro quo or not quid pro quo, from a practical standpoint, if they could use the money to. Further really benefit South Aitken Avenue, whereas uh Elizabeth uh clearly explained. Which I completely agree with her, driving down the road all the time. You, that's where you need the sidewalks. So in my mind, it's, this is pretty clear. I think there. I guess for two things, Mister Golis.
Skip, were you, you have something to say?
Just gonna say there are two issues that we were trying to develop here. One is our attitude towards. The interior cul-de-sac sidewalks, which maybe we should have an independent vote just on that issue. And the second is, and the bigger issue is a vote on whether or not uh we should defer. Preliminary uh approval or rejection on additional data points that we don't have and review letters that we don't have.
Correct.
Yeah, and and just, you know, and Joe confirmed this. I have not spoken to Joe about this, Joe Conwell. Um I I understand and and I think I uh read the mood of the board regarding. Proceeding further on this uh this evening as far as um um a continuance. Um or a tabling of the overall plan. I understand that. And if the board does decide to table the plan, we will give necessary extension because right now I think. Hold May fourth or May fifth. So certainly I would extend it for another month to um early June, whenever that would be.
So Nick, the the next planning commission is May third. So the assumption is. If, and I'm not speaking for the commission, if they did table this or held this, uh you would be placed on the May third agenda.
Okay, and I would extend it um through June. Do we have two board of commissioners meetings in May? Steve, do you know?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'll make certain at least that I extend it beyond two board of commissioners meetings. And that's two board of commissioners meetings after May third, which is probably sometime in June.
So in May, we have one on May tenth, Board of Commissioners and May twenty fourth, Board of Commissioners.
Okay, I I'll extend it to June third or June fourth, as I said, thirty days after um. Whenever the current extension is to, I think it's May fifth.
Well. So can I, can I just, I'll just finish my point. I really applaud uh. You putting sidewalks on Ithian. I I think that's, having dropped my daughter off for years at Agnes Irwin. I'm well aware of the traffic along Ithian is not nice. And then regarding the sidewalks on a cul-de-sac street. Um, I'm kind of okay. I mean, it's it's gonna be up to your nine house owners, uh whether they. You know, like a community with or without sidewalks. I I I think it's gonna. Um if it was a, if it was a street, a city street, uh Radnor Street that passed through and went on to. Uh another block and uh then I wouldn't support that. But I think in a cul-de-sac, it's, it is kind of questionable whether it's. Necessary and even if you have them, they don't go anywhere. So. So that that's kind of my my position on it, so.
So Mister Chairman, um are we at a point where we can address the sidewalk issue separately? And then uh address the tabling or not of of this preliminary application?
Yeah, I mean, the sidewalk issue is a recommendation, if I understand Steve. Um and so we can, we can, we we can call a vote right now on.
We need public comment first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, you're right. Yep. Ian, is there any public comment?
I am not seeing any hands raised for public comment.
Okay. So. Um, does somebody wanna put forth a motion to?
to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we
Make the motion that we grant the waiver sought for the interior sidewalks of the development.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Trish, you got that?
So that's unanimous?
That was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And with Liz, that's six oh?
Was Liz still there? Is Mary?
Yes, Ms. Ms. Everly, the second, is there?
Thank you.
So. Is, I think we, from what I've heard from the board, I mean, it seems like everyone agrees that we should table this, table approval of the preliminary plan until we have sufficient detail to feel comfortable doing that. Does someone want to put forth a motion?
I make a, I make a motion that we table this application for preliminary approval for another meeting for next month.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Um, Steve, one quick question. Mary, would we have to send out new notices if we already agreed that the next hearing would be May 3rd?
I'm going to let Steve answer that.
Uh, Nick, I, I think you do, but I will check to see if it's absolutely required or if it's just a staff call. If it's a staff call, I'm going to tell you, yes, you need to send them out. Mr. Conwell has been very upfront with his project and he's met with everybody and I commend him on what he's been doing. And I just want to keep that level of transparency and actually notification moving forward.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Joe.
You.
Thank you all. And Dave. Okay, next up is 250 King of Pressure Road zoning hearing board application. Just to remind everyone, we, we heard last month, we heard this project, we received the, the, they were before us for the zoning hearing board application. But they've done some revisions to the application, so I think. Bob Tucker?
Yes, thank you, Matt. Bob Tucker, representing the applicant, again, being the owner of the property at 250 King of Pressure Road, with me this evening is Joe Trainer and our engineer, Alex Tweedy. And as Matt indicated, we were here last month where the planning commission voted to take a neutral position with regard to the pending zoning variance application. We're, we're back here tonight to go through the, the changes we made to the applicant's plan, following feedback from the Board of Commissioners at their meeting last night. Accordingly, we, we continued the zoning hearing to April 15th. Again, Joe and Alex are here and they're going to walk you through the changes that were made in the plan. And with that, I will turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. So I'm Joe Trainer with Brandywine. Matt, as you mentioned, this is the application that we presented to you last month with some amendments to it. We amended the application based on feedback from the Board of Commissioners with their feedback in mind. We're still seeking three variants requested, but in a moment, I'll turn it over to Alex Tweedy from Land Corps Engineering to walk through the changes. Really, the biggest change is we're looking to minimize the variance request after as much as possible on minimum landscape area. So our prior application and, and Alex will be able to quote the exact numbers, we were asking for variance on minimum landscape area and it was over 12,000 square feet. We've reduced it now to 7,000 square feet, nearly a 5,000 square foot reduction. And in doing so, we, we did have to sacrifice some of the added parking spaces. So the rest of the plan is relatively the same, still proposing a structured parking deck that goes two tiers above grade. We didn't want to go to a third level because then the project then becomes a very large parking garage and really overpowers the site. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex to really walk through the changes.
Thank you, Joe. I am showing my screen to show the proposed site plan that was submitted with the modifications. As noted, the result or the reason for the changes was feedback from the Board of Commissioners on impervious coverage or inversely, the minimum landscape area. The general layout of the site and everything we discussed last month is still very much applicable. Parking garage is still in the same location. As Joe noted, still the same size and, and number of stories. The majority of the changes occurred at the main entrance in the existing parking field and then some minor modifications to the southwest where we were proposing some additional generator pads. The best view might be this comparison drawing, which this is the original zoning plan that you saw last month in red overlaid on top of the current zoning plan. So the bulk of the changes occurred at this main entrance. We agreed or proposed to, to remove some of the existing parking lot and maximize green space at this main entrance, which also allows us to install a rain garden for some stormwater improvements as well. Like we said, the parking garage is still the same. We were able to reduce the stair tower and elevator rooms slightly smaller and we had a larger impervious plaza for the pedestrians to cross. We reduced that down to just a simple sidewalk and ADA ramp to get across to the main entrance. And then also, as we discussed, we originally were proposing two generator pads. We've reduced that to one, which saves some existing green space in this area as well. As Joe noted, that we were originally 539 total parking stalls. We reduced it by 10 to go down to 529. And from a minimum landscape area standpoint, we're now only increasing impervious by 7,327, whereas the previous was 12,270. So as we noted, we were able to find about 5,000 more square feet of green space. Just for recollection and summary, we noted there are three waivers that we are, or variances that we were going for in front of the zoning hearing board. Those relate to setbacks which remain unchanged. As we noted, the property line is a little bit unique. It doesn't follow the ring road. So there's a setback variance for the structure on the southern property line and the eastern property line. The southern property line is 43.39 feet opposite King of Pressure Road and this property line is 17.17 feet opposite Redner Chester Road. Those remain the same as they were last month. There's also a building and structure area variance that does not change as the size of the garage is the same. It's still 42.4% that requesting a variance, but we were able to reduce the variance from the minimum landscaped area. We're now 29.4% where we were previously 27.8%. That is the brief summary. If there's any additional questions, I can provide more clarity, but the general change was increasing the green space in this area by the main entrance.
Just a quick comment. I think last month I mentioned that this is the Penn Medicine Building, right?
It is, yes.
Correct, yes. It's always been underparked and I think even after you build this, it'll still be underparked relatively speaking.
Correct. From the code perspective, we are improving the existing non-conformity, but it will still be below the code standard for parking, but we believe substantially better than it is today.
And, and Skip, just to clarify on that, the what we've shown today is keeping the existing mix of uses between medical office and professional office. We're really where we see this building going as we go to retenant it, that's probably worst case scenario. I do see a larger mix of of office or lab as opposed to medical office, which is a significantly lower parking load, especially in daily trips in and out throughout the day. So the, the goal here in what we're proposing is to really get to over three per thousand parking ratio, which is, is pretty standard for the market.
This is a terrific plan on having the parking garage. I think it's a great use of space and we've done these for a couple other places. Is there a reason why you didn't want to put a third level on considering the viewpoint, like when you're coming around, you really can't see it because of all the trees and how it sits coming around that corner? Because I know you mentioned you were worried about the height of it, but is there a reason you can't put a third story on and give up more parking around the perimeter?
It really, it was the height. Once you get, especially in a suburban, so this is two stories above grade, so it really is three stories at ground level, second level and third level, going up to another tier in, in suburban parking garages, it becomes a bit of a challenge and really those top, that top level starts to become a bit of unused space and it does, it would then put this parking structure taller than the adjacent building structure where it then begins to really kind of stand out as the, the largest structure on the property.
Okay, so you're saying that basically by the time you get to that height, people don't want to go all the way up there to park? So it becomes unused?
Yeah, it becomes a challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Along those lines, do you have a side view that would show the comparative heights of the, of the structure in the existing building?
Alex, are you pulling it up?
This is the rendering from the architect that generally shows, so you can see we have ground level and then a structure, structure level one, structure level two. It's generally in line with the top of the main portion of the building. As Joe noted, with a third level, we believe this upper level would start to peak above, above the main field, the main roof of the, the core building.
And Alex, can you go to the, the street view in this package as well? So this will give you a good sense of it as well. It's a little bit hard to see here because it's behind the tree, but the, the elevator tower, elevator and stair tower, that's really in line with the height of the existing building. If we add another tier, then that also has to go up with it.
Sure, no, I, I understand. It's just helpful to have a better, rather than the, the flat squares. And you also don't feel that it would be beneficial to you to have that extra height? It just wouldn't, you don't think it'd be worth the investment?
It doesn't, it, it, as I mentioned, it becomes a challenge and really there's become seldom used parking spaces once you get too high in a suburban environment.
Even if you were to connect it like Bernmar Hospital Medical Arts Building did to the hospital where you have a skywalk?
We admittedly haven't looked at that. I think that would, yeah, that would be, you know, again, would probably become a very large structure. Really was our goal was try to minimize the impact on the site as much as possible. It would then become a, you know, substantially larger structure, substantially a larger project.
Just a quick question. As far as entering the parking garage, are there multiple entrances from the service road?
Alex, can you point those out there?
So from a, from a main circulation standpoint, and we discussed this last month as well, the main goal of citing the garage was to keep this main entrance and this loop existing in the existing condition. There are multiple parking fields off this loop road. As you can see, you can enter all these rows of parking. We are proposing to maintain those access points through this project. So we'll have the main entrance to the garage on the north face here. We are proposing three more connection points through those existing parking lots. The center one will be dual access in and out, but these other two will be exit only through the facility.
Is there any other commission comment? Is there any staff comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a quick comment. There was some conversation about adding a, a third story on top. Is it possible for them to recess the first level, so it's slightly below grade, not maybe completely below grade? And then put that third deck on top. That way it may be in line with the same roof, but still be able to get that additional parking.
I don't believe so. The, the ground level is the existing parking field itself at the conditions that it is today, where we're really just building the first and second structured levels above the existing parking field. So, any ability, the, the elevations of the garage are basically dictated by the existing elevations of the parking lot today, plus the required clearances for vehicular traffic through the garage, et cetera. So the elevations are set by the existing grade of this drive aisle at the main entrance. And then everything is, is basically controlled from there. So the elevations are.
Have kind of a two elevate, two elevations or levels up and one elevation down to be able to get four levels instead of just the three. If you have some ability there with the service road being slightly depressed, to be able to get a lower level, maybe a little bit lower.
That loop road should be a lower elevation than the entrance points.
In that way, they could take advantage of that and then possibly increase the numbers of levels without encroaching into the overall height of the existing building. Just a thought.
Right, but if we lowered it to the elevation of the loop road, then this connection to the ramp for the upper levels wouldn't, wouldn't align. It's not, this route, road isn't low enough to be an entire story below. So unless, unless we got an entire story and we're able to change the ramping, the, the elevations wouldn't work out with that change, with the, with the ramp location and the necessary ramping between levels.
Alex, on the, the south, I'm going to call it the south side, the lower end, yeah, in that area, if you were to eliminate or add an entrance to a, a lower level there and eliminate the other three on the right side of the garage, would that not alleviate that concern?
This area is buried into the hell slope right now. Existing grade is about, I believe, four or five feet above the garage level on this southern face. So we aren't actually able to connect the garage at that level. We, we looked at that at one point, but, but the grades do not work. But the current, there's a landscape berm here existing that we're preserving.
And it is important to know, so if we do add another tier, whether above or below, it would obviously increase the parking. We won't be able to get to a point where we are at code compliant if this goes full medical office, which I, I mentioned, it's likely, it would not. It's more likely to, you know, be more leaning towards professional officer lab, which has a lighter use. It's more likely to air, you know, be more leaning towards professional officer lab, which has a lighter use. The plan that's currently proposed today, we do feel does give the right amount of parking at that just slightly above three per thousand parking ratio for what the anticipated use of the building is.
Do you plan to charge for the parking?
We do not, no.
So I mean, it, you know, coming from a world of commercial office development, part of this is is there ROI standpoint, so you know, in defense of developer to put another level on, it becomes increasingly more expensive. Higher you go up, the your costs start going up exponentially. So particularly if they're not going to be getting any revenue on the parking garage, there's no, the ROI is 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 de minimis. So I think that's, that's the practical, that's the practical obstacle, I think, that from a developer standpoint that they're facing. I think they, I think given, given the circumstance, I think if they, I think you guys could do really good, nice job with your plan.
Thank you. And we will, the intent, um, I don't recall if if Bob or I mentioned it, but if we are granted the uh the zoning approval will certainly obviously be back in front of you on land development. So that would really be the next step after zoning hearing board.
Any other staff comment?
I mean, the the question, uh, my question is, do you, from from what we've heard tonight, is there a feeling that we should move from neutral to some other stance on this? The reason we were, the reason we were neutral was we, I think we felt the zoning hearing board has the responsibility and the judgment to do to either grant these reliefs and waivers or not, and it's not in our purview to do that. So that's why we, I believe that's why we decided we were neutral. So have we heard something tonight that would change our opinion on being neutral to this? But as this goes before the zoning hearing board in this next week.
Could you, could you uh repeat the three variance requests?
The three changes, right?
Uh, yeah, the the three variants request, two of them stay the same as were reviewed last month and one changes. So there's setback relief.
Thank you.
There's setback relief for structured setback from property lines. The property line is this rectangular line I'm tracing today.
Yes.
Uh, where forty three point three nine feet on the southern side and the eastern side were seventeen point one seven. As we noted, the the property directly across here is remnant land from the subdivision when this property and two fifty nine were one parcel. And then you get into the Radnor Bus Depot. And then on this side, on the southern side, obviously, two fifty nine has their parking directly up against the loop road as well.
No, that's that's fine. I I just want to, just a summer summary of the requests, so the.
And then the 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 variance from structure, building and structure area, since the parking garage classified as a structure, the building and structure area goes up to forty two point four percent. And then we have the minimum landscaped area variance, which is now twenty nine point four percent, which was the the subject of the change um from last month.
So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Building area, minimum landscape area and setback.
Thank you.
And you're not, and part of your plan, you're not taking down any mature trees or anything like that?
There is, there is tree removal as part of the plan. There's existing landscaping within the existing parking field. And you can see there's landscape, there's um parking lot trees throughout this area, which the garage is going on top of.
But but the perimeter, you're keeping the mature trees around this way. You're gonna have a buffer zone uh from from uh King of Pressure Road and.
Yeah, on the, on the opposite side of the loop road, this corridor is remaining all the same. And all these trees along the road that screen the site are all remaining as well.
And you guys would have to come before shade tree as well as planning when you had land develop.
Correct, we'll be applying to shade tree as well.
So Matt, are you asking whether this, the planning commission should support the request for variance or not?
I, our position last time, Steve, given the information we got last month with, and we got a little more information this time, was we would remain neutral because it's, it's more appropriate for the zoning hearing board to to deal with this. And then once they deal with it, it comes back to us if they grant these reliefs.
All right. So I, I mean, if 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 it's, if we want to change that, I'd fully support the request for variances. I think they've done a really nice job at trying to uh make this building much more viable and and uh tuck the parking garage and kind of where it needs to be and uh made a lot of improvements to the entry. So I mean, I would, if the board is, wants to change your opinion, I.
We could, i- i- you could make a motion thusly, Steve, I mean.
Okay.
Let's, like, one one second, uh, Steve, God, what's the incremental um uh parking spot, uh parking count? How many additional versus, how many additional spaces will be there with your design versus what's there now?
This plan, now that we lost the ten stalls from last month, we are now increasing it by one hundred and fifty six stalls on the property.
And so where's the ingress egress on uh King of Pressure Road again? I'm just, my thoughts right now is just focusing on the track, how much, you know, Radnor Chester, or excuse me, King of Pressure Road right now is, you know, it's, it's getting busy and it's gonna get even busier. It is what it is. But that's something I think we, you know, we should still kind of think about.
And David, to to respond to that, we, so we did have our traffic engineer provide uh an initial opinion. When we uh set out to look at this project, it was his opinion that um that we're not, because we're not expanding or changing the use of the building, that the the traffic is unchanged. And because we're also not adding uh or subtracting any of the the existing ingress and egress from the site from a a car perspective, that wouldn't um, wouldn't change. And actually adding parking helps reduce the amount of traffic. But as part of the land development review, the the township did determine that a a traffic impact study will be required and we are going to do that as part of land development.
I have a quick comment here on two things. First of all, is there a reason why Loop Road couldn't come around and have a one way in, one way out, so that you enter on King of Pressure Road and you exit on Radnor Chester? Because that's, you're coming around that curve there and it's, I've seen a lot of people slam on brakes trying to make them way in and out. And the other thing is, I feel like with all these variants being requested and this huge amount of of um impervious space, I would really think would be nice to look at the ability to put another level on there, especially because you have so many ways to get in and out of that garage. And I think that it is, I I support what Kevin was saying.
You know, I I have a quick question as a follow up. Again, this is history on the board and hearing the this property discussed many times. Are you going to retain in any way a leasehold interest for additional parking like Penn Medicine did apparently to deal with some staff parking or overflow parking?
We were not intending to, and part of adding the the parking garage on this site is to, because and, you know, really what that does is takes your kind of parking burden and puts it on another adjacent site. We wanted to take the, you know, the full parking burden on this site within the, within the confines of the property without spreading it out to other uh other nearby properties.
The reason I said that is that that would go speak right to the issue of uh traffic increase. If you're not keeping all the parking, including off-site parking, then you are uh actually keeping fundamentally the same parking that you had before or a little less, if anything. It seems to me, because you you don't have that overflow lot that they had rented or whatever.
Yeah, and and one of the the opinions from the traffic engineer as well with with adding this parking, what it does from a traffic perspective is when a site is very tight, you have a tendency for for people to drive in, look for spots, end up exiting again and kind of circling the site multiple times. Where you have the correct amount of parking, they go in, find their spot, park and and really get out. So it does, um, this should uh decrease the, you know, the the traffic burden.
Well, the traffic encircling the site is not clogging King of Pressure Road or Radnor Chester. Unless you mean you go, have to go out on the street to get back in.
Yeah, they're more, you know, their opinion was, um, you know, if you take the, like, say you take the Loop Road out and try to to enter back again, that then creates a little bit of a of a challenge.
Okay. So folks, uh, what do we want to do here? Last month, we voted to approach this uh in a neutral position uh as this goes to the zoning hearing board. Maybe that's changed, I don't know. Does somebody want to put forth a motion one way or the other to either remain neutral or take another position?
Matt, do we need to ask for public comment again?
Yes, we do. Thank you. I'm I'm gonna figure this one out eventually. Any hands up, Ian?
I am not seeing any hands raised.
All righty. Even you thought you might make a move?
Well, I I would make a motion to support the uh variance, variances that uh they're requesting to uh the setbacks, the building and structure area and the uh landscape coverage.
I would second that.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go, Trish.
Six to one.
I think we're unanimous, right?
No, six.
No, we said no.
I just feel like we should look at the impervious surface a little bit more based on all that's been going on and how we've looked at these projects in the past.
Well, I think, I mean, it'll come back to us.
Yeah, and more studies of the traffic and some of the zoning, I'd like to hear the zoning board first. So I'm just not ready to 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 say yes quite yet.
Got it.
That's fine. I just, I want to just make sure it's it's six to one, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Mary, you're on.
Isn't it five to one?
No, it's six.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is two thirty six North Aberdeen Avenue. It's a minor final subdivision plan. And it's a subdivision of property and construction of new twin dwelling unit. Who's up for that? Christie?
Yes, uh, good evening. I am Christie Flynn and I'm before you tonight in a little bit of a different capacity than my typical. Two thirty six North Aberdeen is uh my property uh at the existing home there uh with my husband. And I'm here tonight with Jim Musselman from Yon Engineering to discuss this subdivision. We are proposing a new pair of twins, so two semi-detached single-family homes uh on the property, and I can orient you here with what we're proposing. North Aberdeen Avenue is down along the bottom of your screen here. This is the one-way section of North Aberdeen that heads sort of from east to west and then turns and goes out under the railroad bridge to Lancaster Avenue. Um, and we are proposing twins to front onto that existing street with the associated stormwater facilities uh in the rear yard there. Uh, currently, there is an existing single-family home set up in the front corner along the the road there and then a large driveway down into the rear yard. It is a pretty straightforward application. We have received two review letters and I can go through those items, if you have any questions. Most of them are, the items are requesting additional details on things like driveway apron and sidewalk, those sorts of things. There are a couple of items that we should discuss. There are two waivers that we are going to request. The first is for the um showing the significant man-made features within five hundred feet of the site. And the second, we came to after discussion with your traffic professionals regarding the minimum distance of five feet from a property line for a driveway. We feel that that's just an area of your code that doesn't really accommodate this building type where you have a shared wall. And so certainly we could separate those driveways, but that would mean basically a larger curb cut um and a bigger interruption in the the street there. And so we, we would request uh your recommendation of a waiver to that minimum distance. Is it, Matt, how how about I highlight the items that I wanted your feedback on or would you?
Sure, that 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 would be fine. I mean, or the steep slopes of Christie issue, is that something you could talk about?
Sure, I I can tap um our engineer in, but I think really the answer is it's a bad survey point. The area that we're talking about is so small that it's just bad data. Like if you stick a survey stake on top of a six-inch high rock and measure two feet away from it, you're gonna get a steep slope. And that's really what we have. It's this small area that's, I mean, it's where my kids grow their strawberries. It's, it's such a tiny area that we're talking about. So what we would propose is to go gather a little bit more detailed information in that particular area. And I think that it's not going to turn out to actually be a steep slope in the end.
Okay.
Jim, do you want to correct me on any of that?
No, that's correct. Uh, the the survey, we should have looked when we plot, when we hatched the steep slope. But basically the surveyor drew the contour, interpolated the contours from the top of the sidewalk. When that's not at the grade, there's a bit of a retaining wall or a vertical face there on the side of the sidewalk. So that uh three seventy six contour doesn't exist back there. So once that goes away, the three seventy four gets closer to the sidewalk, the three seventy two kind of fans a little closer. So yeah, basically what Christie said, if we're we're just gonna get that distance to the ground from the top of sidewalk and that should resolve that steep slope.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
To everyone, okay.
Yeah, I I I see it.
This is, the the situation is that, um, if if you can picture, the street is high and it's a most of the homes on this side of the street, this is the low side of the street. So these are walkout basements. It's high going to lows, front to back across the sidewalk or across the locks here. And then this is just that the sidewalk is elevated above the surrounding grade there. It's a big concrete step. Um, let's see. There is a requirement or an item in your subdivision ordinance that allows for the Board of Commissioners to request additional right-of-way. And I'm gonna go here, we'd like your clarification on whether you think that's appropriate. This is a one-way street and if the right-of-way were widened as this code would allow, it would go through my next-door neighbor's front porch. So it doesn't get the township really much progress, and so we'd ask for clarity on that.
Well, Christie, so it, the did, or the township staff, was there a request made by the township for for you folks to consider this or?
Matt, that's comment two on my review letter, and it's a standard comment that is typically in every land development plan that we review, because as Christie said, the commissioners have the right to request additional uh right-of-way for a project that fronts an existing street.
Yeah.
And I agree that if you would get the, the required right-of-way that the code allows, it would be through the neighboring structures.
Yeah, I mean, think that houses are tight to the street already.
Yes.
That's correct. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The, um, other item that is listed on the Gannett Fleming uh, letter is number six. That's a will comply. We have, we will add a buffer. I think that the, the comment is just a little bit nebulous and so a clarified, um, this is regarding buffer screens. And so we will add a buffer screen along the western property line. There's a single-family detached home on the west side and then all of the homes on the other three sides are like they're twins. They're all like the proposed use and so buffers are not required between like uses. But we.
No, are you, will you all have to come before shade tree?
We will, yes.
Because?
Because of grading, the, the volume of grading.
Yeah, because we, we, uh, we have some opinions about how buffer screens, like, we don't all agree on shade treated that you know, a long line of uh, a hedge is necessarily the right thing to do sometimes. So we would probably, you'd probably get some input from us about some other types of maybe, you know, other types of plantings, not just a, what people would think is a traditional buffer screen, which, you know, could enhance view shadow and stuff. So but that, that's for later.
Well, yeah, we'll, we will be before um, shade three uh, because of the volume of, of grading that we have to do. So we can get the, the feedback then.
But you wouldn't, you will not be coming before us again.
I wouldn't expect to be in front of the planning commissioner.
Right.
Um, I think those are really the, the items for discussion. We do have to get a sewer planning module because there is still a limited connection, a connection management plan in place in the downstream uh, sewer conveyance. And so that's probably our longest lead time in getting that through downstream uh, providers and then through the DEP. But of course, that would be in place before we could uh, move ahead with development.
Right. Have you had any interaction with neighbors?
Well, you might remember, uh, uh, eighteen months ago or so, we were before you asking for a recommendation to keep the existing home and to build a single-family detached home on the side yard. And so during that time, we spent a tremendous amount of time speaking with neighbors and uh, you know, sadly, in our opinion, that, that variance wasn't granted. And so we are here with this buy right application. So, um, that is what the neighbors said that they preferred when we were before the zoning hearing board. They preferred the buy right twin.
Okay. Any?
Yep. So could you, um, Christie, step back through the points? Yes. So the first point you made was about the driveways being five feet from the property line?
Yes.
So that means they would be ten feet apart?
So what, what the code says is that the driveways have to be ten feet from the property line. And it doesn't differentiate between the property line with the unrelated neighbors and the property line that runs down the middle of the two units. And so the code would say you have to split these apart by ten feet, which we could do, but we just don't think it's the best answer. And so we would ask that you would recommend that waiver.
Well, I, I think it would, I mean, the purpose of it is to avoid this big expansive pavement, isn't it?
I don't know that it's to, you know, what the point of it is. I think what the result would be, would be that the cur, this, this basically results in the curve radius coming into the driveway being shared in this location. What we really are going to do, there'll be a run of river rock here so that it's separated. It's not a shared drive. It's, it is going to have separation. But it ends up with this being shared, a shared space rather than having to have a curve radius going out on this side and a curve radius going in on this side and really elongating this depression in a way that's unnecessary.
Yeah, let me, I guess the obvious question is why wouldn't you just put the driveway on the other side of the house?
We could, but again, the parking on this street is at a premium. We are trying to make the smallest opening possible to disrupt the on-street parking in this location. And this was this was the way that we were able to solve that smallest access.
So just so the planning commission understands, uh, this is your only bite at the apple. Right? This minor subdivision will not be back before you. Uh, so if there's any concerns or anything you want to see on the plan, I mean, now is the time that you would do that.
Yes, uh, and this seems like a very a real challenge to your design to have such a wide expansive concrete.
Well, so think of this, um, if you could, if there was ten feet here, that's insufficient space to parallel park a car. The, we, if we split it, there's likely not to be a parking space available. We're, we're really trying to maintain the parking. We, one of the things that was a big deal when we were out with neighbors is the on-street parking. We did, um, in this design, we showed putting the garage doors set back a little bit. We thought that that was a nice um, way to sort of, to de, defocus, take the focus off of the garage doors. But it, it is a two-car, you know, it's two-car garages facing the street.
So Christie, you, you're required with would be nineteen feet?
Yes.
So you share that?
Well, that's, that's, that's not quite, that's not quite, Steve, the parking spaces would need to be nineteen feet and we're proposing those in the garage.
Okay, so your driveways are what, one's twenty-one point five eight, one's nineteen. So I'm assuming they'll both be nineteen and the difference is that river rock divider?
Cool. Well, we're gonna submit the more detailed dimensions as requested in the um, Gilmore letter that shows each of those dimensions and will have a minimum of the nineteen feet by twenty feet for the two-car parking in the garage. And then we will dimension the driveways to show their compliance as well. And we'll include that detail of the river.
Along with the resolution of the steep slope issue.
Correct.
So the, is it, I can't see from this plan. Is this a two-car garage?
It is.
So how wide is that driveway?
It will be approximately eighteen feet wide.
So, so combined, it's, it's thirty-six feet, right?
Plus a foot in the middle, so it'll be thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven feet. And the water is, or the, the slope is going towards the struct, the structures, correct?
Well, so the driveway will slope out towards North Aberdeen.
Okay.
Uh, the, the water, we wouldn't want to run the water towards the house. So the garage floor would be above North Aberdeen. But the, the green areas would slope down around to the rear. You can back out here.
But North Aberdeen is higher to po, is higher than, than the structure, right? Or the, or the grade of the structure? Correct?
No, no, it'll, the structure, garage and first floor will be higher than North.
You're gonna raise it, okay.
Yeah, the existing first floor of the house is higher than the sidewalk. But there, the way it's laid out now, there's a little dip in the front yard.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at a photograph of, of, of the structure now. Is there, I mean, if you, if you're going to go with this design, rather than having a large concrete with a area with, with a thirty-seven feet, could you do something non-permeable? You put in some sort of a non-permeable driveway, stone, crushed stone?
Uh, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want, well, stone is typically considered impervious as well. And I don't think that's going to be an attractive maintenance scenario in this in-town situation. You know, this is, this is not a large country lot that can handle a, a stone, a stone drive. Um, you know, we are below the impervious limits with those drives and the proposed footprints of the homes. Um, we are going to be obviously installing new stormwater systems. The current paving and existing structure is completely undetained. And so each home will have a new system to accommodate for the, the impervious that's, that's created.
But I think the question before the planning commission tonight is uh, do you want to make a recommendation based on what you see? Or do you wish to, and that recommendation would be with whichever way you wish to go? Or do you want to see the plan back again next month with issues resolved and, and other items on the plan as Christie has spoken of? Miss Lynn?
Can you, um, so the first issue was the set, what's the next issue? The first issue was the, was the driveway setback from the property line? What was the next one? The steep?
The waiver requests were the, were the, um, showing the significant man-made features within five hundred feet.
Oh, okay. All right. And then the steep slope was another?
The steep slope, I think, is, like I said, it's, it's not an issue. It's a bad, bad plotting.
Christie, Roger made a comment about the title.
I have a updated title. Delaware County title searches are a little slow right now. Um, there are prohibitions against saloons and tanneries. Glue factories, but nothing about.
I haven't seen it yet.
I'll get it over to Mary.
I did, you know, I I'm, and it's great that you're developing the property, but I, I, I can't support why we would uh, support a waiver of the, of the driveways from the property lines. I think it, this, it's to avoid creating thirty-seven feet of pavement, which I, I understand your parking concern, but I'm not sure. I mean, unless you laid out the whole street, I'm not sure I, I would ever be able to evaluate that, but.
For you, for your information, there's a number of houses up and down Aberdeen that have shared driveways, just like the way this is shown.
And well, that could be, but that's not what before is before us, correct?
You're not thirty-seven feet though, right?
Most of them are, um, are probably twelve feet on each side, so they're probably twenty-four. They're, they're fit in the side yards. So, you know, in a case where there, this is an existing twin, so the driveway on this property is on the property line. Um, here.
No, but I, I guess, I guess I don't, unless there's some serious hardship to doing it by code, I'm not sure I understand why it's this way.
Like I said, the re, there's, it's the parking, it, it maximizes the parking. It does create, um, you know, a garage doesn't really need windows in a twin house. The wall that's shared doesn't have windows. This would allow for this to have windows, but really the driving force is minimizing the impact on neighbors. You know, for us, we own both of these halves. We have, we would have, um, we try to have some consideration that we don't go into the area that's closest to the existing neighbors was kind of the idea. Try to keep our impacts on, on our own two lots here.
Christie, does the, whatever the separation between the driveways, how far would that come down towards the street?
Well, I would imagine that it would need to get to the sidewalk and then the sidewalk would go across the throat of both driveways.
So the sidewalk, that apron is your shared apron?
Yes. The sidewalk is on the curb in this on the street. So it's, uh, par, it's traveling one-way, parallel parking. Um, and then the sidewalk and then the yards. And so all the driveways have their depress, depressed area in the sidewalk um, as the apron.
So Christie, for, for the planning commission's sake and for my own edification, would you just step through, I know you've stepped through it in detail. Just step through what you need to do, the updates to the plans from where they sit now to where they need to be, like showing the zoning buffer. The driveway, if you could just step through that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we need to show the trees for the type A buffer along this property line. We need to um, do the additional survey to adjust this existing features area here. And there was also a note, um, on the connection of the topography contours. Um, and that's driven because the onsite topography contours are field surveyed compared to the, the LiDAR that they use for the surrounding properties. So those need to be smoothed out. It's just sort of two different sources.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like we're very lacking of proposed contours.
Well, this is existing feature.
Right. I mean, that, yeah, that's my point. No, I'm talking about on your, on your other plan, sheet one.
Yeah, so this is a minor subdivision and I believe that they, we have some spot elevations. The grading plan is required separately for the grading permit. You know, this is a situation where we are finalizing architecture for the actual homes to do a great, a very detailed individual grading plan at this stage would just be redone when we finalized the the final exact dimensions of the, the next of the actual architecture. And so this is enough to show that the plan will be in compliance. There's, there will be compliance, but it's not the exact specific each spot elevation.
Yeah, so looking at this plan, so you have a finished floor of three eighty point three, right, for the house on the right?
Okay.
And I'm just looking at those contours, the existing contours, um, running down and how they're going to tie in. I understand fully that you're going to submit a grading permit application and all this is going to be nailed down. But since you are so close to the other property, I'm curious to see how all these grades tie in from your three seventy-two, which is six feet below, like is, you know, so it's going to be up out of the ground, just curious. I'm not saying you don't have enough to do what you're wanting to do. Just questions I have.
Sure. How much higher is the finished floor of your structure compared to your neighbors? And do you have either a street elevation of that or are they aware of the difference in elevation between the first floors?
I don't have a, I, I don't have a survey of the neighbors' first floor. It's just not information that's available to us. There is a, like I said, the driveway here is along the property line and it's maybe it's higher than the yard here. Um, there's a, a pretty, it's almost a retaining wall kind of uh, happening right here. Um, so this house is higher than this yard by a fair bit. And the, and like I said, all of these homes have slope coming out of the back. So that's, this is a walkout of the homes in the rear. It falls high to low along the side of the house. And the house basically acts as a retaining wall for the higher front yard to the lower backyard. Um, to continue going through the things that we were going to, um, update, uh, we need to label the parking spaces in the garage, the garages and show the dimensions. Uh, label the right of way. We, I suppose we'll wait to hear from the commissioners about whether they would ask for additional right of way. Uh, we will correct or label the minimum curb radii at the driveways to 10 feet. We will label all the sidewalks at their minimum of four feet dimension. We will add the street trees. We already listed the buffer. Provide the title update to your solicitor. We'll find those contour lines from property line, across property line there.
You mentioned planning module approval. Do you anticipate any problem?
Um, I don't anticipate a problem. We have capacity from RHM allocated. And so, uh, we are just sort of moving downstream from there. That's typically the most difficult capacity to, to secure. And we do have that in hand. It's just a process that's greater than what it seems like it should be for a two lot subdivision to go through an entire module. But because of the downstream challenges, that's what we have to do.
So, so I, I have a, you know, I have a, my com, one comment I have is that we saw something earlier in the evening where we didn't feel that we had all the details in front of us in order to vote approve, uh, a plan. And Christie, I, I totally appreciate what you're doing here and, and it, uh, but would it make more sense for us to see something? For instance, to know that the title was clear, like so Mary's comfortable. And so that, um, just that the details that are missing are in, are he, are before us. I mean, it would, it would even be helpful to see, I, I wrote about the street today. And, and when you, when you say there's no parking, you're not kidding. I mean, there wasn't one space on that street today at 10:30. And, but a, a look at the property from the street, I think would help the commissioners here understand what you're talking about in terms of the tightness. It just seems like we, I'd like to, as a commissioner, I'd like to see a few more details, like about what's going on and what the neighborhood looks like. You know, instead of having everyone drive over there. So I don't know, how does her, how does the rest of, how does staff feel about this? Is this, am I being ludicrous here, like suggesting that we delay this until all the details are in?
No, I, I think it would be good to even see, you know, Christie, Ms. Flynn has noted, you know, that the two parking spaces are part of the garage, but that's not labeled. You do have the title thing. I, I think it uh, would behoove everybody to see the plans fully developed as Ms. Flynn has stated, you know, what, what needs to be done. And then the planning commission can make an accurate recommendation.
Because we, like you said, Steve, we don't get another shot at this.
Well, I also, I also think it should be, we should be presented with a plan that meets the code. I mean, we're being presented with a plan that doesn't meet the code if that code is five feet off the property line with driveways. Um, I'm not sure why, other than supposedly the parking on the street, but.
Well, I, I think Steve, I mean, I think Christie, like having seen the neighborhood today, I sort of, I understand where Christie's coming from in terms of you, you don't, when you drive by, you don't see anything except a row of cars and houses that are really, really above the level that you are at, at that point. So it would, I, I think it would just help the commission that we, if we had a little more information about how this looks in real time. Because you, you know, you might, you might say, well, now I understand why they, why they want to do it this way. It's just like looking at it like from above doesn't really, it doesn't really help. I don't think it's helping. Christie, what I'm saying is it's not helping your argument, I think, not having-
I appreciate that. And like I said, our long lead time is our planning module. And so with this direction that you provided tonight, I can be before you next month with the updated plans and that have these little will comply comments taken care of. I, um, I can certainly bring images of the street or I could pull up street view this moment if you wished, if you thought that could be helpful. Because what I would like is, um, you know, I want to make sure I provide you with the information that you need to be able to understand why the plan is drawn as it is. But I wouldn't like to get my plan perfected in this way that I think is the best for the street. And then you guys say, no, no, we don't, we don't agree. So, um, how, how do you recommend that we do that?
I, I, I think you just tie up every loose end you can and come before us next month. And, and have something that where we can see, we can get a feel for what, what, uh, existing and living in this neighborhood is like and, and why, and why you, why your non-conformity might make sense.
Would it be, would it be all right with you if I put on this, this, uh, street view?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, one, while she's doing that, one of the things I've seen other municipalities doing situations where parking's really, really tight in a neighborhood is to have a declaration of covenants, providing that the garages can't be converted to a living spaces. You can't make people park in the garage, but you can prevent them from converting their garages into, into rec rooms and, and things like that. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, that happened on the Maplewood, 415 Maplewood. I believe they have that type of covenant, Mary.
Can you see this, uh, Google image or?
Still seeing the plan.
All right, give me one second. Let me change to this thing here. Okay. So this is the property here. You can see that it's wider. It's, there's a missing tooth on the street here. And all of these homes, uh, twin, twin, single, twin, twin, uh, group of townhomes going that way. Single twins, new townhouses here. Um, and so this is the existing home. And this is the street. So very narrow, like we had discussed. And the parking all along the northern side of the street here. So on this day, there were a couple of spaces available. But it's, it's very, you know, in the evening, every space is full. None of the homes on the, uh, south side of the street have driveways. And so they all rely on on-street parking as their only location for parking. And so each spot is important here.
Yeah, I couldn't even see the sidewalk. There were so many cars on the street today.
Right. And then there's, there's an example of sort of a, one of those driveways that we were talking about where driveway for home A and driveway for home B on the property line.
That was the question I have. It, it seems like your plan is sort of the opposite of how it's set up on the, on the rest of the street. And it may well be that that's a better way, as you were talking to, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. And I think somebody mentioned, at least seeing where in that footprint the garage is on, on, on the plan, even if you don't have the full architectural rendering, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. We can provide that. And so if we were to put the, so if we were to put the garage on the outside of the house, what you would end up with is, this is the property line right here. Right? So then you'd have 10 feet, then you'd have a two-car garage. So this is in, this takes away a parking space here. Then there would be no parking in front of the driveway. Then there would be, um, the yard. And so there'd probably be a parking space there, but then another driveway there. Um, so it would break up those parking spaces in a way that probably leaves so much less parking than what we would be talking about with them together. And like I said, keeping those impacts farther away from the neighbors that exist was really part of the goal. So we can, um, update those plans and resubmit?
I think that I, I don't, I don't want to speak for the rest of the commission, but that sounds like a, a good plan from my perspective.
Christie, if you could just, um, so you'll be on for May 3rd. If you could get them to Trish slash Ganna Fleming Gilmore. As soon as, I don't want you to come back when they haven't had a chance to review.
Oh, no. This, this should take a, this should be a, a quick turnaround because it's minor stuff that we're talking about.
Very good.
So we don't have to-
But I, I don't think the driveway issue is a minor thing. I mean, you need to, you need to resolve that or lay out the parking on the street. If that's the argument, then you'll have to lay out the parking on the street.
Just looking down the street, just to give you guys an idea, there are a lot of shared driveways along this street. There's a couple that are separate just by a fence. So it looks like, I, I don't know if this code came in later than when these houses were, but it could have been that a lot of these other houses were granted a waiver also for the driveway issue.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I, I, I don't think, I don't think we ought to hang this project up because of the, the driveways. I, 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 this is a, this is a pretty unique street in, in Bratner. And the traffic, the vehicular issues are, are, are not, are not, they're real. This is not, Christie's not making this up. So I, I, I don't, you know, I don't know if, I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure the driveways are, are a deal breaker. I mean, I mean, the commission will vote on it. But I, I, right now I'm leaning to, I would lean to approve the driveways. I don't know how anyone else feels about it, except Steve. I know how you feel. So anyway, so do we, where, where do we go from here at this point?
I think the applicant has agreed to table it till, or to table till next month. So I don't think there's any action on your part.
It's left to table.
Any other commissioner, commission comment, commissioner comment?
Staff comment? One last thing, uh, Ms. Flynn, I gotta, I have to check, but will we need any kind of extension?
I don't know, but if you do, we, we will grant it.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
There's a few hands raised for this one. Uh, first public comment is Diane Engelbert.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi Diane.
Hi there. Yes, I am one of Christie's neighbors.
Hi Diane.
Uh, hi there. Uh, and I do have concerns about losing parking. Because there is so little parking on this street. Uh, and I wondered, Christie, are you keeping the existing driveway?
Uh, the existing driveway is likely to be a part of the new driveways if they stay where they are. It would be shifted if they are split.
And if, keeping them where they are, was that your plan to try to take up less parking?
That was my goal, yes. I, I'm, I'm, you know, we've, I've lived there a very long time and understand the, the um, concerns of the neighbors. And so that was certainly our goal to minimize the impact.
Well, I hope your goal still is to minimize the impact. I was just wondering, um, you know, because I can't read plans. I was just wondering if you could use the existing driveway and have the, and have, have the parking be in, up in back of the house instead of in the front of the house eating up the parking.
It, it wouldn't work to keep the existing driveway because the homes have to be attached. When we had proposed those two singles, we had proposed, um, a shared drive that ran to the back because they were split and we could go through the middle, uh, of the two separate homes. Diane, if you remember, I showed you that plan, but with the attached homes, we can't really get to the back. Doesn't really work. And so this is really the, the result of having to do the twins.
So how many parking spaces? You know, there's three up at the top. There's two to the lower side of your existing driveway. How many parking spaces will we lose?
So if the existing curb cut is about 12 feet wide, there, the new curb cut will be about, we said 37. So the difference there is about 25, which is one parking space.
So you're saying that we-
One in a bit. One in a bit because a parking, what's a on-street parking, 24, Steve? Parallel parking's 24 wide.
22.
Okay, so one and a little bit.
Well, one and a little bit essentially means two.
Depending on how it lines up with the other parking spaces that it's nearby, yes.
Yeah, so I think we're losing two parking spaces, which actually is huge for us here. Because none of us on my side have any parking, as you very appropriately mentioned, none of us have parking. Now, one thing that could help ease that was, and I have no idea who owned that property across from you. Do you have any idea who owns all that parking up there across from you?
It's just sold, so I don't know the new owner now.
Well, okay, who owned it before?
Who was the, um, there was a guy named Gene that owned it when we first moved here and then it sold. Once now it's sold again. I don't know.
I mean, which house, at which property does it belong to?
Oh, it belongs to the, the McCurry, former McCurry property that's the corner. So I could go to the-
So that when that was a bar, a million years ago, that was the parking for the bar?
That was before my time when it was a bar, but that would be my guess, yes.
Yeah, it wasn't before my husband's time. He, we've been in the house for 70 years. Anyway, so I just was wondering about how much parking we're going to lose. But yeah, there's, there's the picture of that parking. And so it belongs to that property that I'm looking at right there that used to have like a dentist, some kind of a, a, a practice in the bottom.
That's right. Yep.
And, and that just got sold too, and you don't know who owns it.
Correct.
And so that, that parking all belongs to them.
That's right.
Okay, so there's no chance that that could become parking for the street, I guess.
I wouldn't, I don't have control over that, no.
No one, no one ever parks in that spot. So it's really, it really painful to see that that is that, the situation. Plus the parking around the corner is never, is rarely, it's used a little bit more for the apartments that are in that building there. So we're, I'm hoping that you can do the best possible that you can do to keep it at one space and not, not one in a little, but one space.
Yeah, so Diane, I think what I can do is I can show what the dimensions would be with the driveways together and with the driveways separate. And we can pick, hopefully, um, we can do the one that leads us to the, the least impact. And, and it'll be more than just my, I'll do some math and it'll be more than just my, my amateur explanation, but I'll, I'll show it so that everybody can see it.
Well, your explanations are not amateur. Uh, everything is much over my head. But all I know is that it's a constant struggle to find parking and that's all that I know. And you're, uh, Matt, when he said he rode up the street today, I appreciate that he saw wall-to-wall cars because normally that's how it looks. So thank you.
Thanks Diane.
Okay. Do I just un-raise my hand to say goodbye?
I believe so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also have Patty Conlin with Henry's.
Hi, this is Patty Conlin. Hey, I'm, I'm a resident of Radnor Street Road. I just wanted to find out, um, does the maximal impervious surface meet the zoning requirements with this new layout?
The answer is yes, it does.
Is this R3 zoned?
It is R5, actually.
Okay, thanks.
That's it. Thank you.
That is all the public comment I have seen.
Okay, I guess what, Christie will see you in May.
Great.
And Steve, is there anything else for us to do on this project tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
If I could just make one more comment, you know, that, the, the 500 feet of, you know, creating a drawing that shows everything in 500 feet might be beneficial here, but I hate to burden anyone with that. But if you want to show the street, Christie, I, I'm sure you can figure out some way to do that. Without having to show everything in 500 feet.
Yeah, I think the relevant question is really, how does the geometry of the parking spaces change? And that's really about the, sort of, the property line frontage to the next, you know, sort of interruption in parking. And I, I think that I will plan to be before you with that. And I'll still ask for the 500 feet waiver, but I'll get the relevant piece for you. I just did some back of the envelope here, and I, I think, I think I'm right, but I'll, I'll draw it out so that everybody can see what we're talking about.
All right, that sounds great. Thanks.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Matt, before, before we finish this one, we do have one more public comment.
Okay.
From Roberta Winters.
My comment is for the close of the meeting. This isn't relevant to this specific instance.
Sure, Roberta.
Can I give it to you now? Okay. I really appreciate all you're doing to maintain the quality of our life here in Radnor. And I appreciate the detail you're going into on all of these cases that have broken for you. And it appears to me that there may be several land development projects that are being proposed that will change the overlay district in the Garrett Hill community. And I would encourage members of the planning commission to visit our neighborhoods. And we would be happy to provide guided tours on request so that you may actually see what's going on in the community before you have these decisions brought before you. Okay?
We love site visits, Roberta, so we'll take you up on that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So I have, I have a question. For the 236, do we, do we take a vote for that, for table?
We did not. We just, yeah, we didn't make any action on it. She, she's gonna, Christie will come before us and.
Table it till, till May.
Hey, Matt, I'm sorry. I have one question maybe for Christie, just, just to clarify.
Christie, are you still there?
I'm here.
So Christie, just so I understand this whole driveway issue. Driveway itself to accommodate two, two-car garages?
Yes.
So is there any possibility that the curb cut could be reduced? Even though it wouldn't match the garage itself?
It would be difficult to navigate that. There's a turnaround that's required. There's a dimension behind each parking space that's required. And I don't believe this, you know, this, this is again, not a place with big setbacks, huge yards. It's a small infill lot. And there's not really room to have that sort of narrowing down of the driveway in a way that makes the, the maneuvering of the cars really feasible.
Is there enough room between the street and the garage to put a car that's not in the garage?
Yes.
Just one, right?
Well, one deep. Side by side, two side by side.
Does that mean four total could be?
If we had two in the garage and two in the drive, that would be four.
Say it again. I'm just looking, I'm just going.
How about I put this plan, plan back up really quickly? All right, so the, the front yard is a 25-foot front yard setback. So the sidewalk is beyond, is here. And so then in the driveway, you could fit a car and a car. And you'd have a car and a car in the garage. And then for this home. And then the next door home could have two cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway. And we, we would like to keep the guest parking because certainly we wouldn't want to then, if we had guests come to the to the house, we wouldn't want to take up on-street parking then as well. So I think it makes sense to have that additional space there.
So just going back to comment earlier, I think maybe Mary made it. Is there something you would do at this point with regard to curtailing any ability of those homeowners to ever convert the garage to a rec room or something different than a garage?
Sure, yeah. I, I have a, I have a, like, sort of philosophical belief that we shouldn't try to assume we know what's going to be going on in 100 years. And these like forever restrictions, you know, might lead to unintended consequences down the road. But on a practical basis, if you would like me to restrict the garages, I'll restrict the garages. Though there's not really a homeowners association proposed, so there's not, and I guess it would be a deed restriction that you would ask for recording. Could be listed on the plan. But then some, there would have to be somebody who would take action to enforce it. And I guess that would be the township if it became a problem.
Yeah, normally if there's no HOA, you do it by declaration of covenants that gets recorded against the property. And in nords to the benefit of the township, and it can be extinguished if the township and the homeowner both agree.
We would agree to that.
Okay, then. So Mr. Chair, do we have any other business?
Matt, you're muted.
Sorry about that. The only thing I'll say is that I, I've had a couple of conversations in the last month with people who business owners who feel like some of our code, like the Wayne Business Overlay District ordinance and the comprehensive plan and some other things are woefully out of date and not don't actually reflect the way we live today. And I was going to put on new business next month, an agenda item where we would not spend a lot of time on this, but just to get a feeling for how the commission would feel about taking, you know, trying to figure out, do we want to like look at our code and maybe update our code? Or do we want to try to, how do we, how would we approach that? Or are, as a planning commission, are we even interested in having that, starting that conversation? Obviously, it would have to get before the board of commissioners if we were going to do something like that. But it's something that I think some of us have thought about over time, like our, the comprehensive plan, I believe, is 2000, is 1998. And I think some of the other code is 2003. So it's, it, it, is it, I don't know if it's truly reflective of, of how we live today, some of the parts of the code. So and I don't think, you know, you want to spot zone. So I don't think you want to approach it like piecemeal. So I think it's, I was just gonna put, if you guys are okay with it, put that on the agenda for, for May to just start a discussion, not spend an hour talking about it. But just, just get, get sort of a feeling of other members of the commission, how they, how they feel about, like, if we wanted to even start that process. That's so that's what I intend to do. Any, anybody have any, I really don't feel like getting into it right now, but I just think it's something that we, as planning commission, maybe we should think about that stuff. But Philadelphia redid their zoning code. It took them three and a half, four years. So and that's all I have. So do I need to take a vote to adjourn? Or do we just adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, and we'll see you next, see you in May.